Good evening, I'd like to call to order the June twenty second two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Newberg Planning Commission. And can I get a roll call, please?
Sharon Capri.
Here.
Jason Dale.
Here.
Laney Quinn.
Nope.
Jeff Musaw.
Here.
Chris Wright.
Here.
Linda Newton Curtis.
Yeah.
Mike Griffiths.
Here.
Avery Hansen.
Here.
Well, thank you. This time I'd like to open it up to any public comments that aren't on the agenda. So if you're here for something that we're not talking about tonight. Hearing no one, let's move on. And first item up is a quasi judicial public hearing for CUP two, three dash zero, 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 one, a conditional use permit approval to use a single family dwelling as a vacation rental home, and it's located on three hundred West Third Street. And I'd like to call for any abstentions by a sex part take contact or objections to jurisdiction. Hearing none, Avery, would you read the little announcement, please?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. O R S one ninety-seven point seven nine seven requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence raised the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, L U B A, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at L U B A. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related related to the proposed conditions of of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or it doesn't need to respond to the issue precludes.
Okay, thank you, Avery, and let's go to staff report.
We lost Avery.
Oh, did we lose part of it there? Oh, okay.
Yeah, let me finish. She got to the point precludes an action for damages to Circuit Court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Well, thank you, Doug. There we go. And now we'll go to staff report.
So the application before you this evening is a vacation rental at three hundred West Third Street. So I'll start by entering the entire staff report into the record. Next slide.
Oh, I do.
Click, okay. The applicant or owner is Brian Love. The request is a CUP approval for an existing two bedroom single family dwelling, again, three hundred West Third. Zoning is R one, the applicable criteria are fifteen point two, two, five, oh, six, oh, which is the conditional use right criteria and fifteen point four, four, five point three hundred through three fifty, which are the vacation rental home standards. Three hundred West Third, so this is the location. Again, it's in an R one zone. This is a photo. It's on a corner lot. So the front of the home is on the right and the existing shop and carport are on the left slide. You want to forward it, clicker's not working. Okay, so this is the site plan. Again, so the home does face to the north to Third Street. And then this is where the existing driveway is located. This particular application, and we'll get to it, is, of course, we're required to have two off-street parking spaces. There's currently only one, so there is actually a condition, and I'll bring this up again later, to add the additional off-street parking space prior to utilization of the site as a vacation rental. And Mr. Love will be available on Zoom to be able to respond to questions. So this gets to adding that second off-street parking space and widening the driveway apron, which would require a public improvement permit. So fifteen, two, two, five, oh, six, oh, A, dealing with the location size and design and operating characteristics. So again, it's a single family home. It's in the Hurley enlarges addition subdivision. Currently has a one-off street parking space, and there would be the condition to add the second one. And the use is compatible with other residential uses similar in size, shape, scope. Fifteen point two, two, five, oh, six, oh, B, dealing with location, design and site planning. It's located about five hundred feet from the downtown commercial core. And then the use is similar in size and scope to long-term rentals thirty days or more. That's always that distinction thirty days or less, a short term, thirty days or more, long term. Fifteen point two, two, five, oh, six, oh, C. Consistent with the code, and so staff and in your staff report, it's again, it's similar in size and scope to regular rented or owned dwellings. And then we're going to the vacation rental standards in those provisions. So fifteen point four, four, five point three, one, oh, we've got to be in a single family home. It is. Point three, two, oh, they have to pay the transient lodging tax, and it would be required if this application is approved. They will get the welcome packet from our finance department. Point three, three, oh. Again, the condition that they add the second off-street parking space before they can activate it. Maximum occupancy. So we're two per bedroom. So in this particular case, four, so I guess I got the slide wrong. And then posting that they have to put out by the front door inside a home is that information on garbage pickup, which is on Thursdays. And the maximum occupancy in the standards, and then if Mr. Love was to engage a company to help manage it, that information would need to be on that as well. So staff is recommending the commission move to adopt planning commission order twenty twenty-three dash ten with the conditions that are listed in your staff report. And again, one of those critical ones is to add that second off-street parking space. That's it.
Thank you, and we'll move on to the public testimony portion. We'll give the applicant fifteen minutes to speak, after which anyone that has submitted an inquiry to speak will be allowed five minutes. And I believe I heard Mr. Love, the applicant, is on Zoom. If you'd like to go ahead, sir. Are you there?
Is that better? Sorry about that. Okay, I apologize for that. It didn't come up to say unmute till late. My, we, we acquired this house through my uncle's passing, and our whole ambitions, even before my uncle passed, was to try to turn this into a vacation rental. And unfortunately, COVID hit and a whole lot of things, and that's why where we are now. I were excited to do it. I know there's been some concerns about our fence and the yard around there, and I was really holding off spending much money until we knew we were going to be able to make a short term out of it. And that pins tonight, and fence is going to go with a new driveway because I didn't want to tear down a new fence just to put up a new driveway. But you know, I'm open. I don't know what else to say other than we're excited to do this, and we, you know, I'm I'm a Newburgh resident. I love this town, and I have no desire to, you know, make it some quick turnaround place that, you know, is to be a harm to the neighborhood. Other than that, I don't have anything.
No, thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Commissioner Wright, Mr. Love, on your original application, your phone number has a one on it, but the rest of the documents end in two. Which one is correct?
The last number or the first? I guess I'm not.
The six, eight, seven, two, or six, eight, seven?
Six, eight, seven, one.
All right, then we have those two are typos on page fourteen of forty-nine. Two needs to be changed to one. And page seventeen of forty-nine operator's phone number needs to be corrected with one in place of two. Thank you. Second question on your application, are you going to be allowing any animals or pets?
I'm not choosing to, no.
All right. And I think that's all I have to ask at this moment. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Hey, hearing none, we did have some written correspondence. And do we want to read those into the record?
They are in your packet.
Okay, we don't need to.
No.
Okay. Okay, normally we would, if there was opposition view that we brought forward, we'd have a rebuttal, but we've already heard from Mr. Love, so we'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion and ask for final comments from staff and recommendation.
So staff's recommendation is to adopt order twenty twenty-three dash ten.
Thank you, and now we'll move on to deliberations with commissioners. Anyone have anything?
The application looks really fairly straightforward, and with the condition mentioned by Doug being accommodated and the fence put up and maintenance on it, I I see that this is pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Linda Newton Curtis. Um, one of the things that confuses me and continues to confuse me is that we get letters and testimony from neighbors talking about, you know, the impact that it's going to have on their lives. And as I look at the criteria, I guess it's criteria fifteen point two, two, five point zero, six, zero. It talks about the location, size, design and operating characteristics of the proposed development are such that it can be made reasonably compatible and have minimal impact on the livability. And then it goes on. And so I'm confused, I suppose, about how we're defining livability. Because consistently, we're getting neighbors saying that it is going to impact my livability. And I'm just wondering what we do about that. I mean, am I reading this wrong or or, you know, is livability something that we care about when neighbors come in and tell us that it's going to impact them?
Anyone else?
Linda, I don't think there, I think the terms for livability is kind of broad and subject to interpretation. And if we want to, as a commission, I don't know if we're allowed by law to come up with specifics. But other than that, they have to find something by code, as Commissioner Dale pointed out. And it, it has to do with something like that. Otherwise, us as a commission, we have to rule about what is here unless our guidelines are very specific. And by law, we can do something very specific. But Mr. Downing will also be presenting to us this evening on some more material on short-term rentals. And that the city council and us have also asked for potential cap numbers, et cetera, which will come up at a future date. And other than that, we have to apply what's here today.
Yeah, I understand that, Chris. I do understand that, and I think you make some really good points. It's just that if we're going to have the word livability in the criteria, then I think we need to determine what livability means.
So commissioners, I can say, if you go to the definition section of the municipal code, specifically the development code, there is no definition for livability, so it's pretty broad. But that's something, as we're looking at the vacation rental standards, and however those might be recommended to council to be modified, I would encourage everybody to pay attention to definitions. And so if there are words that need to be defined, then they need to be added into the definition section.
And I, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I think that would be a really good idea because I think it's potentially unfair to the residents of Newburgh if they believe that their comments, when they come here, and their comments generally are about livability. I think it's unfair to the residents of Newburgh if we don't have some definition, or if we simply take the word out, you know. But I think livability is important in this town. So anyway, that's just my thoughts.
I would concur.
There is always room for improvements.
Indeed, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we adopt CUP twenty-three dash zero, 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 one, this condition is permitted at three hundred West Third Street.
Commissioner Wright, I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. A roll call vote, please.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Laney Quinn. I was not here. Uh, Mike Griffiths.
Yes.
Avery Hansen.
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
And Jeff Musaw.
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on, next up is a quasi judicial hearing, and the applicant has requested a continuance. But we do need to go ahead and open up the meeting before we do that. So the meeting is for M A M D three, two, three dash zero, zero, one, and M I S C one, two, three dash zero, zero, nine, which is major modifications of CUP two dash ninety for shelter to add eight additional beds, design a review for addition, a necessary modular building and a parking determination at six fifteen North College Street. And
Mr. Chair, may I ask what date the applicants for requesting to be continued to because they will need to waive the hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty day rule, and I'm suspecting at this point.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All good questions. So in their letter, they've requested to continue it to August tenth, so we will not be taking testimony this evening. You do not need to read the legal language at this point. And they have extended the hundred and twenty days by an additional sixty days to accommodate the continuance request.
Thank you. And as Doug said, we don't need to read the language, so if someone would offer a motion to continue.
My Commissioner Wright, I move to continue the hearing for M A M D three, two, three dash zero, 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 one forward slash M I S C one, twenty-three dash zero, 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 nine to August tenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M at the Newburgh Public Safety Building at four oh, three East Third Street, Newburgh, Oregon.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, can we get a vote, please?
Avery Hansen.
Yes.
Mike Griffiths.
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Jeff Musaw.
Yes.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Okay, the motion is continued until the August tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission at seven P M in the Public Safety Building. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, it looks like our next is items from staff and a vacation rental update, if you'd like to go ahead with that.
All right, so the vacation rental update today is brief, and the last time you received an update on this item was six weeks ago, and we have not been able to progress this item since that time. You may or may not be surprised, we are still moving very quickly through a number of other projects and trying to get through all of our decisions. One of the things that I would add to this update, and that I'm hoping is a light at the end of the tunnel, is that we do have a new staff member that has joined our team, which is Leanne Waggoner over there. We also have, she is our new assistant planner. She comes with a landscape architecture and landscape planning background. We also have another assistant planner that has accepted their position that will be starting in July to fill another of our vacancies, and we're still out there looking for our associate planner position. So again, I apologize that we have not been able to bring this forward faster. We're looking forward to taking it to the planning commission and then on to the city council after we can get some of your thoughts on the research, but I appreciate the comments that were made earlier with the quasi judicial item, and we'll be taking those into account that I don't think livability specifically or the CUP criteria in general are one of the facets that we've used to look at these thus far, but we can try and integrate those. So I think those are helpful comments as we think about how should we be looking at this. But we will be moving that to try and get it to you all as soon as we possibly can. So thank you for your patience with this, and I know that there's a significant interest from the entire commission.
Well, thank you, and congratulations on the new position. Welcome aboard. And from there, we'll go to items from commissioners. Anybody have anything?
Oh, yeah, this is Linda Newton Curtis again. I wonder if I can just say a couple of things. I don't think it's just that there's interest from the commission. I think there's interest from the city about getting something done about this. Another thing that struck me recently is I don't believe residents understand that in order to contest a vacation home in their area, they really have to look at these codes and criteria. I didn't understand that. I think Mike pointed it out to me a few weeks ago. Oh, you've got to think about the code. Oh, yeah, okay, what a concept. All right. But I don't think residents recognize that. I know Avery reads out the blurb right up front, but really people aren't listening to that in a way that they're really taking it in. A couple of the vacation rental houses are close to me. And I know when I got the letter, I don't believe there was anything upfront and forward about, you know, you can contest, but you've got to be thinking about the Newburgh codes. I think from my memory, and again, I just breezed through it. I think from my memory, that information was right at the back, maybe the last thing that you might read. So I'm wondering if the city might take a look at those letters just to review them and potentially restructure them slightly so that that really is something that's in the forefront of what people see when they start to read the, the information about a potential vacation home.
Thank you very much. We can certainly consider that.
I wonder if there's an opportunity for the commission for us to do maybe a little bit better job, because when Avery reads the legal, you got to cite the specific code that you're having a problem with, and maybe when people come up and they talk about all their concerns, we politely interrupt them and say, can you please tell us the code that you are have a concern about so that we ourselves continue to emphasize that we're not automatons, we hear your concerns, but tell us what specific code your concern relates to.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, but I also think that in order for them to do that, they've got to understand that there are codes, and I think most people don't think about that because, you know, you live your life and you get on with what you need to get on with. So I think it really is incumbent upon us, perhaps the city, to make sure that residents understand that. I mean, one of the things that struck me last time I was here was the woman that was reading out every single code, boom, 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 boom. And it really made you sit up, but she's the only person I've ever heard do that. So.
May I just thought for a little counterpoint to this, not to inherently disagree with you, but just to add some discussion to this. So I'm not an attorney, but I believe there are some legal principles that I'm about to elucidate. So the livability word or clause could be construed to be the totality of what the rest of the criteria are trying to achieve. And so by hitting the criteria in order and doing that, you've accomplished livability. If you're not hitting that, then you've not accomplished livability. Now, I'm not saying livability in particular is that particular totality. There may be other words in there that accomplish that same thing. And I believe there is a legal term that encompasses what I'm trying to say much better than this, but as I say, I'm not an attorney. And so, and so you, you kind of got to spell it out. So livability is such an interpretive and open to different interpretations, like the developer's livability may be very different than, you know, the residents or the person who lives in an apartment complex and likes living in a apartment complex may be different. Somebody that wants to have chickens in their backyard, and there are one, you know, I mean, and just, who knows, could be anything. And so you have to really be aware of that. Then, and then the other side of that I was going to mention is that when you're crafting legislation, you have to be very careful about legislating yourself into a corner by being too specific. So then I think that's part of the complaints that people bring up is like, well, when we're in a quasi judicial role, we're very limited by what we can and can't consider in the criteria. And so if we spell out too much, now all of a sudden, people don't have wiggle room. They, it becomes too difficult for people to actually meet things in a timely manner, and it's cost more money and everything escalates. And so, and again, I'm not trying to rain on your parade or anything like that. I'm just saying we have to consider the other sides of all these things, and there's reasons why things are like that. Oh, and one more thing, excuse me. I kind of agree with your point about, you know, challenging people a little bit, you know, gently about bringing up the criteria. But the trouble is, if they haven't known ahead of time and to actually go through and research things, they're going to be like, well, okay, give me twenty minutes to look through the book, you know, and we're sitting here, you know.
Could we add that? Like add the statement that Avery reads, that's going to be read here when we open it. Can we add that so they know they're going to hear it here, and it says, this is what you got to do?
Well, it's, and it's, it's not so much that it's included, it's the significance of its inclusion. So I, I, I'm, again, I'm not sure how to address that because the other side of that is people are emotional up here sometimes, as we saw. And if you come back, well, why don't you have the code with you? And it's like, you know, they get defensive, and so we don't want that. And so, you know, all this, all these things, it's, it's why, it's why we make the big bucks. We're here to be, you know, to really carefully consider how this stuff goes down, so.
And that's why I think there needs to be more transparency when it comes to the letter that originally goes out. I hear what you're saying about livability and how it can be construed differently according to your own experience and so on and so forth. But I don't think it would hurt to at least have some kind of vague definition or vague pointing to what we mean by livability, even if what we're saying is if you meet all these prior criteria, then you've hit livability. And I don't know if that's the way to do it, but I think we need to be. I mean, we're here to support the residents of this city. And I think we need to do our best to do that in whatever way we can. And if that means defining a few little items, I think then we should attempt to do that.
Well, Clay's got his armies now, so no excuses.
Could I add one thought? As an example, I think in the past, what I've seen is the two people per bedroom. And then there's a car associated with each bedroom. And so one house, I, maybe a year ago, it's like six bedrooms. And the neighbors were like, there could be six cars here, twelve people. And we're, we've got our kids in our yards, and they could be. And we're, we've got our kids in our yards and there could be all these cars coming and going down our little dead end street. Do you remember that one? Well, so I just wonder if. Is it even possible that you could cap? Something like that. How many vehicles? Or I mean, I don't even care about the beds being filled, but the vehicles are.
I think that's something else that Clay can add to this list of things that for you all in the City Council to consider. Is kind of think of it as, we have a set of regulations that have been on the books since twenty thirteen. Thanks for reminding me. I'm getting older, forgetting things. Um, and so that's what we've had and that's what we use now for a decade. We've been having this conversation intermittently, you know, for the last years, kind of ramped up in the last six to eight months. And so we can look at it differently. And so Clay's done some research in different communities. And so what we have worked at the time. What do we need to have today that will work for the community today and into the future? And in the world land use, when you do something, it always needs to be looked at at some point in the future. It's not there forever.
And I'd just like to um, caution though, not to get into too many things like um, for example, the parking thing with the six um. That's assuming what? Six couples? And more than likely, it would be one family or two families, you know, using a big one, so. Uh, I'd wanna stay away from over regulating, you know, along those lines and. Touching back to what Jason was saying and what um, Linda was saying about the um, livability. I think the way to do it would be to structure code that meets standards. That we want for livability. Versus trying to be vague because um, vagueness leads to um. I mean, just look at examples from our constitution and words that are still being argued by the Supreme Court. What was the original intent? So, so, but you would want clear and concise regulations. That we could all decide now, okay, this meets livability, but not write that in. And as a standard or anything vague because. The more clear and concise. You are the less. Room there is for. Misinterpretations and things like that. And as far as the um. Comments with the. Regards to um. The challenge, what you're challenging in the code. When you first said that, I was thinking maybe we could put something, you know, when we first read. Or comments, we could state that. But then like Jason was saying, that could get you into, maybe it's best to address on a. Case by case basis, you know, when a person is talking, you know, kind of direct and say is, what is this versus doing like a blanket? Thing, you know, so, so if someone comes up and, you know, try to point him that way or ask what they're getting at. Versus this having a blanket um, statement on it, so. My thoughts.
Well, um, the topic of livability. So when we did the community visioning program. We had hundreds and hundreds of people involved. And there was a wide swath of how people define livability. And so, you know, trying to come up with a. Ten or fifteen word definition for it is, is really problematic. Because everybody has a different view. They come from a different background, experience, how they would like to live, where they would like to live. Proximity to other services and so forth. So everybody's got a different thing. So yep, some want chickens, some like to raise quail. Alpaca, yeah. So, but these are all good things for us to consider. We, but ultimately you're gonna have to have a conversation and start to frame. What you think regulations. Could look like so that we could then go back to the council. Get their feedback about what they think. And once we have that, then that puts Clay in the position to start to craft the words. Um. And there'll be some back and forth for that. And ultimately it'll come to a public hearing because you will be making amendments to the development code. And the council will have to hold its hearing as well. I've read some other uh, cities, how they've addressed this and McMinnville just went through it again and modified theirs. Pardon? Uh, and I think a lot of them address one of the things that. Could be considered under livability that seems to be in a lot of people's codes or regulations, different cities. Is limiting the number that you can have within a certain distance. Uh, I know the city of Sisters, you can't have one with it. If you can't be within two hundred and fifty feet of another one. I think McMinnville just changed theirs to, was it five hundred feet? Uh, of another one. So that helps. I think if people just feel like there's some restriction and distance seems to be one. Uh, that a lot of cities have identified with. It also addresses the livability that you just can't apply and they're all over the place, but. So maybe that's a simple, well, nothing's simple, but a way to say. That's another piece, you know, you can't have a vacation rental in a multifamily. So we have over ten thousand total residential units and parts, I think we'll have to go down. How many single family homes do we have? How many condition uses do we approve? And when you start to look, that's just one way to look at it. We start to look at the percentage of the numbers, it's gonna be really, really small. The dynamic we have is there's getting to be a concentration of them immediately north of downtown and south of downtown. That's where we're seeing because they, people can walk to get. Rest stops and chop and wine tasting and all the different things they do. So yeah, Clay and I are aware of the uh, McMinnville and I've talked with them and. Actually, I did a presentation recently. To the Yamhill County Association of Realtors and it was on vacation rentals and it was McMinnville and Newburgh. So. What we're working on and they presented on what they have just updated. Um, and then uh, there was another representative who was talking about the other small communities. In Yamhill County and what they do, some don't have any regulations. And some have some very loose regulations, so more work to be done.
Absolutely. And, and yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know about distance. Because then you're kind of, you're whoever claims it first, you know? But then you're also, like you said, there's concentrations near where people want to be. So if you distance, you might have less suitable properties. In these parts, just because their distance is met versus a, an I suitable one that's right next to. You know, Main Street and things like that, so. That could be dropping, dropping a shoe on the bug, but you know. So to speak, but you know, I mean, it could lead to, and, and then someone, if someone's doing it on a speculative basis, they can just look at a map and say, okay. I need to buy here, you know, so I don't know that that by itself. Would address livability that it. It's, it's not too tough not to crack, but you know, that's um. Like, uh, like. Could um. Distance limitations be applied? To different zonings, you know, or different um, like if, you know, if you're. A mile away from where everything is. Have. More distance between versus in, in the core, you know, where everybody wants to be. Um, if that's even possible to, to parse it out like that.
As opposed to the homes that are out. More residential, single family homes. That would be much more impactful and really I could see where the neighbors would go, hey, this is really affecting. Our livability in this neighborhood as opposed to this core, this downtown, which really makes a lot of sense. It's within walking distance of the college, that the shops, the wine tasting, the highway. I mean, I can see that. I don't know that we can. Say that. But it makes sense to me.
May I add a little something here? So um. It's my opinion when crafting legislation that you need to identify the incentives and either encourage them or. Discourage them. So the incentives, in my opinion, for what's driving all these vacation rentals is money. Uh. Sites like Airbnb and these kinds of things are allowing people to have more homes if they have the, the money to buy the homes to use as an income stream. Versus, you know, five, six, seven years ago before these things came about. So. You have to realize this. So in my opinion. Coming at these things from, from a regulatory standpoint, from the livability side of things is kind of a non-issue because. You don't really hear about like wild parties or, you know, people trashing places or having an issue or, you know. Somebody coming in and now they rob the neighbors or, you know, I mean, you might hear a random horror story here and there, but by and large, it's probably ninety-five percent not happening. So, so you're, if you craft legislation to curb that and curb vacation rentals because of that, you're not really. Hitting upon the issue, creating them in the first place. So. You need to look at the incent, the incentive, okay, the incentive is these people can make money. So you need to be able to limit the amount of. Oh, I'm sorry, back up one second. So you need to be able to limit them because for these people to make money, it crowds out actual. Living space for people to live in. It's, it's not being used for what it's supposed to be for. A house is supposed to be lived in by people, not. You know, doing it. I mean, some of that's okay, but up to a point, right? And so. In my opinion, that's one of the workarounds of this is calling it distance. It's like, okay, there's just can only be so much in this amount of space. And, and once you have it, that's it. If you really wanna, if you really wanna make money doing this, you gotta go in there and you gotta buy somebody's thing. And now that increases the cost and it discourages people from having too many of these, of these properties in this, in a given area. And so. You can, you gotta, you gotta realize this and you gotta loo- look at what the incentives, why people are doing this and then say, okay, we're, we're increasing. The cost for them to, to be able to make money to do this and eventually you start getting less of it. And it's, it's just incentive. People, people are incentive machines, in my opinion. Well, well, agreed, but.
Thanks. So I agree with what you just said. I actually think when people think about livability, they think about community. And I think when there are too many, when there's. When the density becomes too great, then you lose community and therefore you lose livability. People rely on their neighbors and if they have all these transients coming, very nice transients. In very nice houses, but when we have transients coming in constantly, you lose that sense of community with your neighborhood. And so. And one of the things actually that really irritates me, I don't know if we can do anything about it, but one of the things that does irritate me. Is that when, is when we have um, individuals buying houses and frankly, breaking up communities within Newburgh. And they don't even live in Newburgh. That I find. Troubling, particularly when they don't even live within the state. I know in one instance, somebody was living in Arizona. Again, I don't know if we can do anything about that. It's probably illegal to say you can't buy a house here if you're not gonna. But anyway, that's something that irritates me. I thought I'd just get that off my chest.
Yeah, and if I could um, follow up. With that and, and with like you were saying, um. I disagree with you that a lot of it is just um. The open and, and I think quite a few of the people that we've seen come through are people that live there part-time. And rented out part-time. And um. Honestly, uh, after hearing a lot of these come up, it's something I'm concerned for the future. Um, my son's a sophomore in high school. He's gonna. Probably go to college out of state. I have a seasonal job, so I might. Live here part of the year and if I could find a nice little villa in Spain, but, but who knows? But it, you know, it's entertaining and I could see the value to someone that's only gonna be there part-time. And I see that, that's a whole different beast. And then like you were saying, someone from out of town, you know, buying an speculative fee. Um, as just a moneymaker. So how do we? Decentivize one without decentivizing at all.
I, I just would add, and I'm not disagreeing. I don't wanna get too far into the weeds with, you know, the what ifs and the what have yous, but uh. I suspect a lot of people, while, while they do have good intentions, the reason they're doing that is because of the way the tax code is written. Because there's tax advantages to living there part-time. Not, not due to some altruism.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, you know, um, yeah, if you're. You're able to pull income and then you can take losses off for your house and everything. And again. The way you're talking about taxes because just a little tax thing here, um, vacation rentals aren't handled tax-wise. Well, if they're, if they're done right, they're not handled on a schedule E. They're supposed to be done as, on a schedule C as a business. Which does open up a lot more room for losses versus a scheduling where you can't take passive losses. So absolutely, there's, there's good incentives there. So.
Uh, Commissioner Wright, um, has there ever been any cases where people have tried to sue cities or counties for? If they go in and buy a property and it, like in the case of Dundee, they touch one another. And then they wanna prove it because that alters their ability to. Uh, pay for their home or be income producing?
I don't have a specific answer to that, Commissioner. That would take research.
I'd only honestly be surprised if there weren't. If you look so far enough, even just this court case on about everything, but.
Well, I'm thinking it might be a good idea to look at uh, potentially some of those cases and find the negatives or the positives and maybe uh, come up with some.
Excuse me, could you repeat the, the nature of the court case you're talking about?
Um. Like uh, in this case of Dundee where two properties can't touch each other and they can't be two short-term rentals that touch each other's property. Uh, yeah, some, something like that or. You know, if there are lawsuits, why are they? How to, if they get approved and the person wins, how? And what, you know, what are those kind of criteria?
Well, so just based on a philosophical thing, based upon what the state government is pushing, I think that the. State courts would have a very ti- very tough time justifying. Coming down in favor of the vacation rentals when they're pushing density left, right and center, so.
Well, doesn't mean it's uh. Not gonna have some legal consequences. And I would hate the city to get into any more legal consequences and costs to city work. As well.
That was a um, nice conversation. Um, if there's anyone else or. Then I guess we're ready to move on to an adjournment. So um, this time I'd like to adjourn the uh, June twenty twenty. The June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission and we'll see y'all next time.